I'll call the order, the meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission for June 24th, 2025. At this time, we ask that everyone please stand for our prayer and pledge allegiance, led by Commissioner Amber Brown.
Can you bow your heads, please? Dear Heavenly Father, I just want to say thank you for allowing us to gather here today. And I ask that you cover our minds and our hearts as we make decisions on behalf of this county today. Bless those who have come today to express where they stand with the decisions that we make and what they will bring before this county. We appreciate your favor and your love that you give to us continuously in all things. In your name, amen.
I pledge allegiance.
Thank you, Commissioner. This time, we'll ask for our roll call and the termination of quorum.
Jim Everwater, Jeff Phillips, Mike Kush, Lee Vogel, Charlotte P., Trey Gooch, Jim Thompson, Michael Shirley, Jason Beavers, Amber Brown, Pettis Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum.
We do have a quorum. Approval of minutes, but I don't think we have minutes available this morning, so we'll move into public comment period. Are there any comments?
No, sir, there are not.
No public comments this morning? Items withdrawn or deferred?
Yes, sir, we do have one item we have removed off the agenda. That is under the preliminary plan approval, Kitchell-Glen. That's 25-1002. You'll recall that this was deferred during last month's planning commission meeting. They're still working through some of the issues with the traffic. Mike, what is that thing called? The... Safety audit. The safety audit, yes, sir, thank you. So they're still working on, diligently working on it, but we have removed it from the agenda for consideration this month.
Okay. Item one will be removed from our new business and submitted for preliminary plan approval. We're moving into that right now, so we'll immediately start with number two. Twin Oak subdivision, 25-1004, 88 lots on 71.6 acres, zone RM located along Twin Oak Drive. Randy Freedsum is the applicant. Mr. Damasi.
Yes, sir, thank you, and good morning, everybody. As you stated, the applicant is proposing to develop a subdivision on this track with 88 lots. Eighty-four of those lots would be for single-family residential homes. The remaining lots are for common area stormwater detention and step lots. All of these lots are a minimum of 15,000 square feet, consistent with the RM zoning, since this is not a rezoning request or a PUD request. Some things just to point out from the standpoint of traffic. I'm going to let Mike go into a little bit more detail as far as the traffic study that was done. Before we get into that, however, I did want to make a note of the Amari Lane. You can see that's the southernmost straightaway right in that area. That actually exceeds the block length that we have in our subdivision regulations of 1,600 feet, about 1,800 or so. Just want to make sure that that's pointed out, that any approval would just have to be subject to a waiver to allow that straightaway. They are proposing some traffic calming devices, some speed humps along this road. Mike can go into a little bit more detail about that, but I wanted to make sure that that was brought up prior to any further discussion on that. Regarding any other comments from a planning, at least zoning, standpoint, most of our comments have been addressed. Like I said, I'll turn it over to Mike to discuss any drainage and/or traffic issues.
All right. Thank you, Doug. So, yes, on traffic, we asked them to look at several intersections. This is the subject property. If you can see my cursor here, it's right on the southeast corner of Twin Oak Drive and Adams Drive here. And if we look at the preliminary plan, they will have one entrance that Doug was talking about, Amari Drive off of Twin Oak Drive, and then also they'll have an entrance off of Adams Road. So let me get back to the maps. Well, Adams, if you know this area, Adams Drive is a narrow lane, so that was one of our concerns, and that was addressed in the traffic evaluation. So let me zoom out a little bit if this doesn't lock up on me, which I think it has already. Okay. So let me drop back and punt. Okay, I love technology. So let me close off a few of these things. So this is the subject property here. This is Adams Drive. We asked them to look at the new site entrance on Twin Oak Drive. We looked, asked them to look at the intersection of Adams and Twin Oak, also Halls Hill Pike and Twin Oak Drive, and also Last Castas Pike and Twin Oak Drive. So they did a thorough traffic investigation and looked at the existing background traffic, oh, excuse me, the existing traffic, the background growth in the area, and then also when this development is fully built out, what will the impact be? So what was essentially established with that is Adams Drive will need to be widened to at least 22 lanes with shoulders, and it will need some site triangle improvements at Adams and Twin Oak Drive. And I can, I was trying to get, see if I can get Google to work for me. Bear with me just a second. Okay. You can always find the place. This is the Blue Water Wiregrass Old Hoover Quarry. Twin Oak Drive is on, this quarry is on Twin Oak Drive, so we'll look at, this is Adams Drive here, and...
Mike, did you say that, did you say that the entire length of Adams needed to be widened?
No.
Or just the intersection with Twin Oak?
Just, no, the intersection will need improvements, and then they're going to widen it to the end of their project, not all the way down. So let me go back to the map.
Does any of this neighborhood access Adams Drive?
Yes, yes.
Which page?
Hold on just a second, let's see. Whoop, not that one.
Oh, I see, sorry, I missed a page.
Okay. So their, their plan is to rebuild Adams Drive through the limits of their development. It goes a little bit farther and serves a few larger tracks back here, but they're just going to widen Adams through the end of their project, and it'll kind of taper down right at this end. So let me get back to... So this is Adams Drive, and you can see it's very narrow. It'll essentially have to be rebuilt and widened. A lot of vegetation that'll need to be taken out. A lot of the widening will happen on their side, but they'll have to also work with the highway department to clear, like, trees close to the edge of Twin Oak Drive. And I believe this power pole might have given them some trouble, but I'm not, I don't believe we've seen the final construction plans yet, but... So they'll make improvements at this intersection, widen Adams Drive, and then also their traffic study indicated that they needed to make some improvements at Twin Oak and 96, Last Castas Pike. And I'll get there just, just a second. So this is the intersection I was talking about. Right now, and you can see the dump trucks that come and go for the quarry. So right now, it's two lanes, and it's sitting kind of low. And so when you're on Twin Oak Drive, you're sitting below the grade of Last Castas Pike, which is kind of in a super elevation. It's kind of tilted the opposite way, banked away from you. So their, their plan and this traffic study indicated that they're going to need to do dedicated left and right turn lanes here, coming out of here onto Last Castas Pike. It will still not be ideal, but it'll be a great improvement. And while they're making these improvements, we're going to have to have them bring this grade up, too, so they're not sitting below, real far down at this intersection. So this, this intersection has a lot of challenges. Let me exit street view. So Last Castas Pike is State Route 96, which is a TDOT road. And so it's, like I said, it's banked away from Twin Oak Drive intersection, and then there's also this large box culvert that I should have pointed out when I was here. Right here. So this is, needs to be cleaned out, too, actually. But that, that was one of our big improvements that they needed to do was at this intersection. Their traffic study indicated that at the site entrances, get back there, sorry. The site entrances, they will need to have dedicated left and right coming out, but they did not warrant turn lanes on Twin Oak Drive. So this, the development side is this property here, the wooded area on this side of the road. So they're, so essentially, they're rebuilding Adams Drive and rebuilding the intersection of Last Castas Pike and Twin Oak Drive. I don't believe they had anything going on at Halls Hill Pike, but I could be wrong. I'd have to ask the applicant. I don't believe they did have anything there that was required. So, but they are making substantial improvements in the area, rebuilding Adams Drive in that Drainage, Doug mentioned earlier, they will, I think they even show them on some of these They'll have stormwater management ponds in various places to treat the stormwater before it gets in these, this unmapped stream right now. And that was one of the things we had them do. The, if you look at the flood study for the adjacent creek, hold on a second. Ah, this thing's locked up again. Okay, sorry. I'll turn it on here. So Bushman Creek stops, so the FEMA stopped the study of Bushman Creek, and we asked them to evaluate Bushman Creek as it crosses over into the property. And they have done that, and they show that on, on the plans. You can, you can see that there's more drainage that flows through these areas, and they do indicate...
Mike, how many feet of fall do you have across from the western edge to the eastern edge of this property? Looking at all those cedars, it says to me it's rocky and...
Right.
Flat and...
Well, there is, I'm just going to close this out and reboot it, sorry. So there is a significant hill on the property, but they are not messing with it. It's, it's kind of off to the south limits of the property here. Is that what you want me to look at, or just from, from this end to this end through this lower?
I think it would be from Halls Hill Pike, from one end of the creek that you speak of to the far end where it kind of tuckers out there. How many feet of fall is that?
That's, this red line is around 610 elevation, and at the road, we're looking at 600, so about 10 feet of fall from one side to the other. Or a little bit less, maybe, if that's a 98, well, a little bit more, sorry. Yeah, a little bit more. So let me get back to the plan real quick. So actually, they don't include that hill. I was thinking it was part of the property. I think they did carve off a remaining parcel for the owner to keep, which is down here. And that's going to be around, was it nine acres? Yeah, around nine acres remaining. And the hill that I spoke about was actually off-site here. So these lots will be a little steep, but not terribly steep, like you would have on this area. So, but they are proposing several ponds. The layout that we, we discussed, and Doug mentioned it earlier, was this long straightaway. And that was one of our questions, is like, you know, that's, that sets up for speeding in subdivisions. So we asked them, so what, what are you going to do to help calm the traffic, slow it down? They are going to post 20 miles per hour, but they also are planning on doing traffic calming, speed humps, or tables. We have to, I guess, work with the highway department. You know, once, once the road's built and turned over to the county, it becomes the highway department's responsibility. So we have to work with them to come up with a traffic calming feature that they're agreeable to maintain. And this is one of the locations that they showed, but we're, we're still kind of working on that with the design team by this mail kiosk. But we were talking this morning before the, this meeting to maybe look at having an additional speed humps to slow the traffic down. These, these will be signed and warned, much like the city does in their subdivisions. But, you know, we're always looking for ways to help slow the traffic down, and that was, that's what they came up with. So to read it right, we'll need to work with the highway department to, to make sure they're okay with this. But all in all, they've addressed our concerns. We will need to talk with them about this long straightaway that Doug was talking about for its block length. And maybe, maybe the design team can address that. They might have some ideas about what they foresee in that. But that, that's my, my take on this. Anybody have any questions for me?
Commissioners, do you have any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mike, you mentioned improving the intersection with 96, including right and left turn lanes off of Twin Oak onto 96. Was TDOT involved in that traffic study to talk about a left turn onto Twin Oak off of 96?
Not, not as of yet, but they will be. So we'll have to have meetings. I don't believe we've had a TDOT meeting with this yet, not yet. Okay. So we always have a online meeting with TDOT, and we discuss it, look at it with them, and they make recommendations, even separate from what the design team or our, even our third-party reviewer, you know, they've, they've come up with some, some things that they're focusing on and ask them to look at. So we will have to definitely work with TDOT on this.
With the proximity to that box culvert, it's not just as easy as putting a little extra width to the road there.
It's, yes, sir.
It's a big challenge. I know that, I would be curious to know, we'd love to know the information from our police. I don't know who's in charge of jurisdiction at that particular intersection, if it's county or city or both, but some of the worst wrecks that I've seen on 96 are at that intersection, with people getting impatient, waiting for trucks to turn to access the quarry. And I've seen some pretty gnarly wrecks there, and have a, have tremendous concern as the road board representative for that area. That's a place that, that causes me great pause. I'll also speak to, just, it is officially in our minutes of the road board that, no, no speed humps, because I've brought that up before. It is the number one question that, that we get. This is the number one phone call that I receive, is people speeding. And I think out to Buchanan Estates with long straightaways similar to this, this is, if my math is correct, about a, almost a four tenths of a mile straightaway there. But speed humps, I can tell you, is not, it's not going to get the support from the highway department. I can save you all some time on that one. Would, would, but I, I could not vote in favor of this with, with that long straightaway there. I would much rather see at that mail kiosk, at that, where the TVA power lines, you can't build any houses right there. I assume that's what that is. That's a great place for like a roundabout, and I know that we've approved neighborhoods with roundabouts, and the highway department has taken care of those. It's a, it's a paver, it's a paver issue. When the paver's coming down through the road, they can't go over those speed humps.
Yeah.
And so that's, that's just some input there. But I am curious to see what TDOT would say about those turn lanes off of 96 onto Twin Oak.
Anyone else? Commissioner Thompson?
Just looking at the plan, Mike, we got a, overhead anything of what happens like in 2010, looks like a lot of flood area. At least we got flood line.
Right.
Like a flashing light to me, looking at this.
Yeah, I think the 2010 aerial imagery does go out that far. So I don't believe it had water standing on it. It's kind of hard to see with the heavy trees, but it might take just a second to come up. The yellow is City of Murfreesboro, and that intersection is just outside of the Twin Oak One. Okay. Here is the aerial imagery from May 2010, jumping around, sorry. So here's Bushman Creek, and it looks like you can see pockets of water standing on the property. Apologize, it reboots, initiates. But yes, sir, I don't see a whole lot of flooding, maybe just some old farm ponds that were holding water. But it looks like Bushman Creek is the city limits where they've annexed to, and that intersection is just outside. But we would definitely have to work with Last Castas, I mean, excuse me, TDOT on this Last Castas intersection.
Other questions? Comments, or would you like to hear from the representative or the applicant? We'll ask them to come forward this time.
Thank you all for your time. Chris McGuire with Huddleston Steel Engineering, an engineer on the project, representing Randy Freedsum. To address some of the comments and concerns, we had two studies regarding stormwater done. First one was a hydrologic determination to evaluate streams, wetlands, and items like that. We've got TDEC concurrence, that there is one wetland that we're preserving, and then there, the creek that flows through it is just a wet weather conveyance, and TDEC concurred. We also had a hydrologic analysis done by Neil Schaefer, evaluating the 100-year flood and its limits. We include those in our design, and you can kind of see how the odd shape and layout is due to avoiding those areas. So the lot layouts largely avoid the 100-year flood areas. As far as traffic goes, Bill Huddleston in our office did the study, and it was confirmed with Greg Judy, the county's consultant. We're happy to work with TDOT regarding the improvements at Last Castas Pike and Adams. Concerning the large run, spoke with the applicant before I came up here. We're, we're happy to move that end road further down the Amari Lane and create a four, a three-way stop condition. It's less ideal, but feel that it would, it would cause that pausing without the need for speed humps, and it would be, have minimum impact on the layout and lot count. I'm happy to answer any question everyone's got.
Are you saying, Chris, you're moving this farther?
Yes, sir. We would definitely humor that as a solution. We'd be happy to work with engineering staff to come up with an agreeable solution.
Okay. And then this would become a cul-de-sac?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then you...
That would essentially cut the road.
Three-way stop right here?
Yes, sir. Then we do a three-way stop condition.
Is that a better solution, in y'all's opinion, than a small roundabout in that area?
I'm very hesitant to roundabouts. I mean, I don't know if you ever see the one in Lebanon Square, and how that one functions.
I've seen, I travel case and lane, those are...
Yeah, yeah, some of them do function very well, I agree. But it's something that we try to stay away from, and one of the issues with this lot layout is the TVA towers. Where I would probably ideally put it is somewhere in the middle, and that would put it right next to TVA towers, and I think that we would encroach within their leg constraints. We're only allowed to grade within 25 feet, I believe, is what Mike and I had spoke about earlier regarding a different project.
And I don't, there are other options besides speed humps and roundabouts that qualifies traffic calming devices that, that, so I don't want to limit you necessarily.
Yeah.
I don't know how, how hard it would be to move roads and whatnot. Three-way stops can, a long straightaway, people may just blow right through it, which is another complaint that I hear regularly as well. So there may be some other options there. Doug, do you all have a list of recommended traffic calming techniques?
I mean, we don't have any kind of a list. We maintain in the office, no. I mean, I would just say best practices, really, is probably what we'd be looking at for something like that. I mean, that may be something we look at in the future, but nothing we currently maintain.
And as you'd stated, we need to work with the highway department to what they will maintain from here on out.
But, and we're happy to evaluate some other options if engineering has some alternatives they'd like us to evaluate. And of course, highway department.
Commissioner?
I've had to go back in several subdivision of the years, and, and the three-way stops usually seem to take care of it.
Mike, can you hover over where that three-way stop will go? Because I think I missed that.
Okay. I think he's somewhere down in this area, maybe, moving it closer to the, the kiosk, to the right of the kiosk, just so, just to the right of the kiosk, maybe right in this area.
Get that road divided in about half. If that's an acceptable alternative.
So that would put us, let's see...
I think it'd be about 1,800 would be the two numbers. I think it'd be about 1,800 would be the two numbers.
Looks like it would be around station, yeah. There's a thousand is where the, Station 10 plus O is a thousand feet from the intersection. This would be 1,100 feet, so 1,100, 1,200 feet, something like that.
The distance so short, hydraulically, it shouldn't change much conditions with the road crossings and piping. So, it should be pretty minimal, and we'll be able to pick up that lot down there at the cul-de-sac. So, it shouldn't affect our lot count either.
Commissioner Phillips?
Chairman, I'm not 100% sure that this mic is working. Can everybody hear me okay?
You just have to hold it fairly close.
The other one doesn't work at all, so let me, if you're having trouble, just let me know, and I'll speak louder. You had building experience with this applicant, Randy Friedsum, before?
Yes, sir. We've done probably six-plus projects in Rutherford County, and he's local.
Very good. Do you know the type of homes that will be built there, makeup of the homes and the size of the homes?
No, sir, I can't speak to that.
Can I ask him?
I'm Randy Friedsum, I'm the applicant.
Let me just preface that, if I could, a little bit.
Yes, sir.
Point that we keep hearing over and over and over again for years and years and years, that comes out of the development industry and the real estate industry is affordable.
Yes, sir.
Compare that to what, how we build our school systems. We build brick and mortar schools that will last 100 years. Some of the quote "affordable" housing may be affordable to start with, but are not everlasting. And my concern is that we're building homes that will not withstand generations. So, just give me an example of the, of the size of homes and the materials you're going to use to build those homes.
These homes, I hadn't decided whether I'm going to build or not, which I do, but these lots are going to cost, be so costly to develop. These lots will sell for the 200,000 to 250,000 range. And when you sell them for that range, you're putting an 800,000 to a million-dollar home on that house. And that's going to be your, it's not going to be your starter homes, let me put it that way. These are going to be high-dollar houses.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, but that answer is perfect for me. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Any other questions?
Anybody, any other questions, commissioners?
Thank you all.
I think I would have answered it the same way.
Thank you. I think that's got us.
Thank you all very much.
Commissioners, further comments or a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Charlie?
I, I do have some major concerns about that, that long straightaway. There's, unless I misread the plans here, there's no sidewalks in this neighborhood, correct? So, I do not feel comfortable voting in favor or really denying this application today. The developers indicated that they're willing to make some changes down there to address some of our problems, or at least my problems, with that long straightaway. So, I would move to defer this to give the developer time to meet with staff and address the issues that were brought up today.
I have a motion to defer.
Second.
And we have a second. Further comments? Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Jim Aberwater?
Yes.
Jeff Phillips?
Yes.
Mike Kush?
Sure.
Jim Thompson?
Yes.
Michael Shirley?
Yes.
Jason Beavers?
Yes.
Amber Brown?
Yes.
Pettis Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So, it is deferred. Moving into Section B, submitted for final plat approval, Muscatel Property, Track 4, Division 24, 2056, two lots on 5.6 acres, sewn RM, located along Woodridge Street. Gary Dubby and Deborah Robinson are the applicants, includes waivers for a lot of less than five acres, excess for private easement, and a private easement of less than 50 feet. Mr. DeMossy?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this property is located at the end of Woodridge Street. It's not technically part of the Summer Place subdivision. That's kind of what makes this particular request a little bit unique. The tracks at the end of Woodridge appear to have been divided by deed sometime in the late 1990s. What the applicant is proposing on this lot is to divide about an acre and a half from the parent track, which is Lot 4, for a family member. Due to the size of the existing tract and the fact that it only has about 25 feet of road frontage along Woodridge Street, they are asking for the two waivers that you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, at the beginning of your introduction. A lot of less than five acres, excuse me, a lot of less than five acres off of a private easement, when the minimum is five, and then a portion of the easement allowed to be less than 50 feet. They've done the best they can on the plat, keeping a 50-foot access easement on there, however, with only limited road frontage. At some point, it has to narrow down. So, that's the reason for that request. That really is the only outstanding issues, or the only outstanding issues we have on this. All of our other comments have been addressed. Our fire marshal had made some comments that the surveyor has addressed as well. So, with that, the applicants are present, will be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Chairman? What is the private easement? Because it's not just a, it's not just a cul-de-sac, like the end of the cul-de-sac?
Yeah, it's not. When you look at the actual property lines, and Mike's got it up right, that the property lines actually kind of go to a center point in the road. It's kind of a, it's a 50-foot radius cul-de-sac.
Okay.
But, it's not one that's maintained by the highway department.
That was going to be my follow-up question, is if we make this approval, does the, do the people on, at this cul-de-sac still?
That's correct.
Responsible for maintaining their cul-de-sac?
That's correct.
And they're well aware of that?
Yes.
Totally.
Nothing in that regard is changing.
Okay.
Other questions for staff? Well, ask that the applicant comes forward this time, or if they are here. Just both of you come ahead. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Chairman Reed and members of the Planning Commission. I'm Bill Huddleston with Huddleston Steel Engineering, and I will introduce to you Mr. Sam Bean and his father-in-law.
My name is Sam Bean. I'm the father-in-law, or the son-in-law, rather, of Gary Robinson here, who, him and his wife own the property, and I'm the son-in-law.
Just trying to divide up some property for our kids, looking for your approval. Commissioners, any questions? I think we just got you up here to see, it looks like. We've seen you. I think, commissioners, you see, this is a family division, is what we're looking at. Commissioners?
Chairman?
Commissioner Phillips?
I think staff comments, staff expects some of the remaining comments to be addressed for the meeting. I think that's already happened.
That's correct.
Any approvals should remain subject to staff comments, including the rate request. And that's my motion to approve of the request.
Motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Have a second. Further comments? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, it has been approved. Item C, submitted for site plan approval, is Walter Hill Church of Christ Edition 253016, construction of a 4,733 square foot addition on 10.4 acres. Zoned in, located along Lebanon Highway, Walter Hill Church of Christ is the applicant. Mr. DeMossy?
Yes, sir, thank you. The church, this probably looks familiar to the Planning Commission. This just went through the rezoning process not terribly long ago, but they are proposing to make about a 4,700 square foot addition to their existing building for a new fellowship hall, along with other interior renovations. You recall, those renovations resulted in, or will result in, their occupancy and their sanctuary exceeding 500 persons, which made it a large community assembly as opposed to a medium, according to the zoning ordinance, which is what necessitated their rezoning request in the first place. So, that was approved by the Board of Commissioners back in May of this year. Our comments, I've been addressed from staff standpoint. I'll turn it over to Mike if he had anything further. I don't think there was anything. But, this site plan appears to be in good order. There's no need, due to the size of the addition and everything, the amount of parking that they have is adequate. There was no reason to do any further addition of park or anything like that. So, as far as we're concerned, like I said, the site plan appears to be in good order.
Commissioners, questions for staff?
Chairman, I don't need to hear from the applicant. Does my heart good to see courts like this expanding in today's society. All staff comments have been made. I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a second. Further comments? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, it has been approved. Moving now into staff reports and other business. Mr. DeMossy?
Yes, sir. I do have an item that I would like to kind of bring up for discussion, mostly for direction, just to kind of give you all some, an update on some potential development we may be seeing here in the not-too-distant future from a rezoning request. Mike is bringing up a concept plan on the screen. Now, this is not on your iPads, but what you're seeing here, this is from a firm or an outfit called Hillwood Development. The area you're looking at there is Bill France Boulevard, Bill France Drive, right there, State Route 452 by the racetrack. You can kind of see the racetrack at the north end of the, of the concept plan there. And it's right off of the interchange there at 840 and Bill France. Now, before we go any further, I just want to say that what you're looking at here is conceptual, okay? This is not something that's set in stone or anything like that. This is really just to kind of give you a little bit of background for what I wanted to talk about today. We've met with the folks from Hillwood on several occasions. They are in negotiations with multiple entities, not just ourselves, but also Town of Smyrna for potential sewer access with CUD for water access. There's a lot of moving parts to this. So, what they would like to do is they would like to make a rezoning request for a lot of this property in this area. And you can see those areas highlighted there. Again, conceptual, those aren't going to be placement necessarily of buildings and everything. So, they're looking at the possibility of making requests to the county for probably something on the lines of light industrial type. These are going to be like warehouse distribution type uses, maybe some commercial uses a little closer to the interchange there. You can kind of see some of the smaller buildings closer to the interchange. But, you can see across 452 in Wilson County, you can see that there are some existing buildings. So, it'd be a similar type land use to what you're seeing there. Again, warehouse and distribution type facilities. What I'd like to talk about today is kind of how they are proposing to move forward. The way they wanted to move forward with this is they wanted to bring this in as a planned development. What makes this a little bit challenging as far as doing this as a planned development, and quite frankly, I don't foresee that a lot of these buildings are ever going to be developed in the county, especially once sewer access gets up there from the Town of Smyrna. A lot of these are probably going to be annexed into the town as time goes on. But, one of the things that they're looking at for, yeah, Mike's pointing out the county line issue. There's a lot of moving parts to this, just be aware. But, what I wanted to talk about today really was the reason for their planned development request really was not necessarily to change any of the setbacks or anything like that when it comes to the light industrial zone or even the employment activity center zone, but the maximum height. As far as the building heights, what they would like to see is the ability to build up to 60 feet. That would be really the only thing they'd be changing in their development application if they were to make a PUD request. So, all these building locations, everything that you're seeing here, there's no guarantee that these buildings would be located here. So, which you can kind of see the issue that staff has been having with it. Typically, when we see, especially a non-residential planned development, it's typically a lot more specific. You're seeing building locations, you're seeing where the parking lots are going to be, where the roadways are going to be, interior roads, things like that. What they're showing here is conceptual. They don't want to be locked into a specific design. They just want to have the ability to have slightly higher buildings than what is allowed in the industrial zones in the county currently. Incidentally, they're running into a similar issue with the Town of Smyrna with their maximum heights as well. On your iPads, you will find a, kind of a comparison of some surrounding jurisdictions. You've got Rutherford County's height limitations as far as maximum height in different zones. But, then we did a, kind of a survey, just a brief survey of some of the, some of the surrounding communities, some of the surrounding counties. Karen Gardner in my office helped me really put this together, and I appreciate her, the work that she put into this. But, what you're seeing here is kind of, it's, you know, there's not a consensus, I would say. It's kind of all over the place. You know, Rutherford County for light industrial, you see 40 feet. For heavy, we got 50. And then the Employment and Activity Center, which allows for light industrial uses, you've got 40 feet. You can kind of go down the list. Robertson County, Wilson County, you do, you do see some higher limitations in, say, Lebanon and Murfreesboro, even Smyrna, and their heavy industrial zone allows for slightly higher than what we would allow. So, the conversation that I've been having with the applicant, potential applicant, they haven't actually submitted anything yet, is I asked them, I said, well, I'm going to bring this up at least to the Planning Commission to kind of get their ideas, if they'd be comfortable with looking at some sort of revisions to our maximum height for the industrial districts, or if they'd just like to leave it alone, you'd rather than pursue a planned development application, even though the only thing they'd be changing would be the overall height, not necessarily any building locations. It would all still pretty much, what they're showing on that concept plan may or may not be what ends up being constructed. I will say that as part of this, and Tanya and Josh can certainly chime in, I did email kind of a synopsis of what I was going to be talking about today, just to get their take on it, if there were any kind of codes issues or fire code issues we needed to be aware of. And I'll, you know, I'll, they can feel free to jump in. The consensus that I received from them was that when it comes to building height, even if the zoning does allow for a certain height, there may be building and fire code issues that may necessarily knock that down just a little bit, depending if they can meet certain fire code requirements and different things like that. Like I said, I'll let Tanya and Josh speak for that. I don't want to put words in their mouth, but that was kind of the general gist I got from that. So, that's just kind of a, just kind of an overview of what I wanted to talk about this morning, just to kind of get your ideas, if you'd be comfortable with us maybe making a change to the industrial heights. If not, I mean, they can proceed how they're going to want to proceed, but that just kind of gives you an idea of what I was hoping to get some feedback on from you all today.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for our fire marshal. As it relates to our equipment, our apparatus capabilities, can we get up, like, what's our maximum height for being able to attack a fire? You know, can we get up 75 feet and put water from the top?
Yes, we'll take delivery of our new ladder truck here probably, I believe it'd be in 2026. So, we should be well-prepared for that.
Do you know where that'll be stationed?
We're still discussing that, but without getting into the depths on operations, I'd say, you know, we're looking probably central portion of town, so it's going to be able to be, you know, effective anywhere. But, even beyond that, like, you know, initial, initial response is going to be likely an interior response, interior attack anyway. So, the ladder truck itself would not be a primary initial asset. It would be something that could be utilized later on if during the course of rescue or any additional needs for fire attacks. So, but yes, we would have capabilities to address those, those types of buildings.
Up to, up to how many feet on that ladder?
Most, I believe the truck they ordered is over 100.
Okay, so, no problem getting somebody off the roof or onto the roof?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, we wouldn't have any issues there.
Doug, if we didn't, if we, if we made no changes to our heights, could they still apply for, in a PUD, apply for exception as a PUD?
Well, as a PUD, they could create their own district as far as, like we've talked about with other PUDs. They could say, yeah, we're just going to make it so that it's, our height is 60 feet, which is what they were proposing to do. I think staff's hesitation was the fact that that was the only thing that was going to be of any certainty. You know, when we look at planned developments, like I said, we typically, this is where the building's going to be, we know where the parking's going to be, we can plan for a lot of that. This is basically going to be, they're going to be creating their zoning district, and there's going to be a whole lot of unknown about what it's really going to look like. So, I mean, it's, if that's what you'd rather them do, then that's fine.
My, my question, I guess, is if we make this change for this, if we make the change for what's allowed in these different categories, any property that has been rezoned to these would automatically be able to build higher?
That's correct, yes.
So, like, I'm like, I don't, I don't know how many industrial properties we have that are vacant. Do you have any idea how many this would, how many vacant lots?
I mean, off the top of my head, I don't. We have, they're scattered around. Some of them have already developed, some of them are just kind of out there, but yeah.
I just, I worry that maybe we approved, approved rezonings of certain... I just, I worry that maybe we approved, approved rezonings of certain property and told people, "Don't worry, it's not going to exceed 40 feet." And then we make a change, then now they could be 30 feet higher, which is significant change. So that's, that's one concern I have, just personally. We're not preventing them from applying to build a higher warehouse. I know that that may cause them to pause of investing money in planning something, but that's...
Well, and that's fine. Like I said, I would just understand that when the planned development, because that's the route they're going right now, when that planned development comes in, everything they're showing you in a concept plan, I'm just going to tell you is, it's off the table. And that's just not how we typically handle planned developments. So what's the greater evil, I guess, at that point?
And like we spoke last night, or I did, that I, I evaluate every application on its own merits, and in this particular area, it's, it's, it would match, a higher building height would match the area, but if we applied that same thing over to 840 and Amalville Road, it would be really out of character for that, for that particular area.
Again, this is, I'm just looking for input.
Right, right. So that's, that's why I'm like, if there was a way to say, moving forward, if we rezone, it could get this, but everything that we've already, you know, grandfathered, but the opposite way, I guess you might say.
Well, yeah, I mean, once you open that, once you give them the, what's already zoned that way would be able to take advantage of a greater height.
And, and, and that's, that's my concern, just for the few minutes that I've considered this.
I mean, the only other option they would have, and we talked to them about that, and that's, that's kind of why we brought it up today, was the only other option would be they have to go to the border zoning appeals for every single unit, which I don't think anybody really wants to have them do that, that doesn't make much sense. So the route that they're going to go, if we don't make a change to the height, and that's fine, but it's going to be a planned development, but it's going to be a planned development like you've never seen before. And I mean, that, there's going to be challenges with that. I'm just, just preparing you ahead of time, because they want to make application next month. So just, just, just be aware that that, that that would be coming.
I tell you what, personally being on top of a 60-foot silo, I can tell you, I think I would rather see us stay on course where we're at and let it be the exception and let them bring it forward, rather than making it where it is the law and anybody else could take us to 75 feet. So I believe I'd leave it as is.
And just, just for reference, the Amazon site is, the building is 40-foot tall. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I, I think I'm, I'm in line with these other two guys, and I'm not opposed to going higher, but I would want to see things, and hopefully this is beneficial to the applicant that's about to send this, I would want to see maybe a stepped-up design, lower buildings in the front. Very concerned, and where I'm going is I'm very concerned about the view shed. Our buildings seem to be getting bigger and bigger and more and more metal on them and just not very pretty. So I, you know, maybe step back, put the taller buildings back, some, a lot, uh, higher landscaping requirements, some architectural standards and that sort of thing, so that it, it blends better instead of just huge walls out there. And I would be open to looking at something higher, but just to grant something more than 40 feet, it's a pretty big, pretty big ask, I think. So maybe the PUD is the thing to stick with.
Sure, and that, that's, like I said, that's fine, but I mean, just to understand, that, that's the only thing they want to change, you know? They're going to bring in a planned development application, they're going to be showing buildings, but they're going to say, "Well, we don't know if these buildings are really going to be here." And that's just not how we typically handle planned development. That's what makes this, and that's why I wanted to bring it up. You know, I, I certainly don't have a problem if we want to leave things alone, but, you know, they're going to be making an application for something that, you know, there's going to be a lot of unknowns about it, and, you know, it's not, it's, we've never really handled a planned development from what they're proposing, where they're really just wanting to change one thing and then leave everything else alone. So now, there may be opportunities in there, Jim, to kind of talk about the things you were talking about, hey, if we're going to do some step-ups or do whatever, you know, for as far as building heights and things, there may be some opportunities for that kind of discussion, but that's, I don't think that's really the route they, they're planning on going at least for their application to start.
Mr. Cushing?
So Doug, are you saying, you, you, their anticipation, you think is they're going to come in and ask for 75 or 80-foot-tall buildings?
60. They want to do 60.
Okay. But if we stick with our current standards, even though it's a PUD, we can still say, "Yeah, thanks, but no thanks." You got to stick with the, our current...
Well, I mean, with the planned development, as you know, they can kind of set their own setbacks, and they can set their own bulk requirements and things. So now you could come back and say, "Well, yeah, we're not comfortable with the 60-foot height. No, you got to keep it at 40." I mean, I suppose you could do that.
Yeah.
There have been other planned developments, and I mean, I don't want to speak definitively, but I want to say that we've looked at at least one commercial planned development, industrial one, that was 50 feet, I think.
Right.
Yeah, so, and that's just part of the, the process. But, you know, again, that particular planned development is very specific about where the buildings were going to go. That's not what they want. They want to be able to kind of, basically just say, basically it's going to be a new zoning district, you know, this is a planned development, but we don't know if the building's going to be here, it may be over there, it's not going to look like this, it may be this big, it may be that big. I mean, there's going to be a lot of unknowns with it, so...
And Michael, that Amazon that you measured 40 feet, I think you said?
Yes, sir.
Was that out there at the Wilson County line by this?
No, this is the one off of Joby Jackson.
Do, do you know what some of the heights are of the, of the complex or that character area near this site that you're talking about?
I...
They don't, they don't seem to be very tall.
Yeah. Murfreesboro does allow 75 feet. Now, whether or not those buildings are that high, I don't know, but...
Well, I think those are...
Are you talking about, I'm sorry, you're talking about in this area in Wilson County? I'm sorry, I, I thought you were still talking about Amazon. Excuse me.
Yeah. Those, yeah, those seem about 40 as well, but I see where Wilson County has this little fine print that for every one foot setback you go back, you get to add an additional foot.
Yeah, to a maximum of 65 feet.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Because I'm like, both gyms, from the char, the character aspect, you've already got an existing cluster of those type of construction. They need to be all similar in nature. You can't have one group that's just twice as tall as the rest of them. So I'm happy to try and match what's out there currently, but I don't see doubling the height of those.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm at, I'm wondering, from a square footage perspective, if you've got a 40-foot building, it's usually a one-story building, correct? And you've got a certain number of square footage in that building? If you double that or take it up to a two-story or a three-story, does that increase the square footage of a building?
Well, if they're adding, like you said, like a different story, if they had like, and I'm, you know, I might defer to Tanya and them on this, but if there were a larger building that had multiple stories, that is additional square, square footage of that building, and you're also starting to contribute to your floor area ratio and things that we would have to look at, you know, how much floor do you have versus the amount of land that's there? And there are limits to that in the zoning ordinance as well. I don't know if that answered your question or not, but the answer, I mean, just strictly speaking, if you've got a two-story building, it's 1,000 foot on one floor and 1,000 foot on the other, you've got 2,000 square foot building, so yes.
I guess my point is, if, if it's 40-foot now, and they want to take it up to 60-foot and use the same square footage, in my mind, it's a possib, possibility that they're circumventing the square footage assessment that they would have to pay as far as developing, that you can use a tow motor to go up an additional 20 feet or whatever. So they're getting more utilization out of a building than they can right now without having to compensate the county for utilizing more square footage. I'm not saying that I'm against that in any shape, form, or fashion, but I'm saying that it may be a way to circumvent what our county just passed within the last year or so as it related to commercial development, anticipating our development tax. So just a thought. If, if that's what's happening, I've got a concern about that. But if that's not what's happening, and they're just looking to build a taller building so that they can put an additional floor or something like that in there, I, I think that should be okay. But I also think that this should actually be discussed as to why they want a taller building. Why do you want it? And, and, and we'd be able to get some of those answers somehow, some way.
Right.
You know, I'm, I'm thinking if you build a two-story building, the square footage is doubled pretty much, per se. But if you build a commercial building and make it higher, does that increase the square footage? And your answer is not necessarily so.
It just depends on what, how the building is designed and constructed, really, you know?
I agree with you, Doug, and that's the reason I'm asking that question, you know? Why do they want it? What's the purpose of doing that? And what's the purpose of us having a 40-foot building? As time goes by and as our land continues to disappear, we may want to be building up, and this, this may be part of that process. So I, I'm just saying we need to make sure we have some of those answers going forward. Is this what we want to do in the future? And, and if it is, that's fine. If that's what this commission wants to do and the county wants to do, that's fine. But is, is there a way that people are trying to get around some of the opportunities that the county has to collect a, a taxation when we can on residential and we can't on commercial? So we just need to ask those questions and, and have those kind of answers. Once again, I'm not advocating one way or the other, it's just a point that I think needs, or some questions that I think need to be asked. Why do they want it? And good for us up until now, why is it not good for us? And if it's to better utilize the property that that's on, it's probably a smart thing to do. But if, if it's to circumvent and get around processes that we've got in place, I've got a little bit of a concern about that. So I'd like for those folks to be able to answer those questions. I'd like to look at, let them look me in the face and ask, ask those type of questions. Right, that would be a, a challenging development to go through. Some of those, I guess, it looks like there's residents, some residential lots in the middle of that development.
There, well, there, Mike, can you pull that concept plan back up? Thank you. There are some, yeah, right in that area, that, that is correct, that there is some in there. There's also, as Mike pointed out, there's the county line issue. You know, they're showing some buildings kind of split between two different counties. I mean, that's an issue that they're well aware of, and we've already told them needed to be addressed, one way or the other. Wilson County to the east has already zoned a lot of that property, similar to what those buildings up on the, on the north side of the, those existing warehouse buildings are already zoned or something similar. So there was a neighborhood meeting that they had a month or two ago. They're actually having another one tomorrow to further discuss their plans. There were, there were several people that were at the meeting, they had a lot of comments, a lot of concerns, understandably. But, so, that's, like I said, there's a lot of moving parts with, with this thing, so...
I, I, I agree with all of that, and once again, my point was, why are they wanting to change a policy that's longstanding? I'd just like for them to answer the question.
Sure, right, and that, yeah.
And, and I don't like the design of surrounding a residential neighborhood. That bothers me a little bit, too. And if I live there, I'll be stalling up and down saying, "You can't do this, you can't do the longstanding nature of that area." So there are some, there are some real concerns. Exactly right about, about this. I'm open-minded. So it might be the thing to do. Also, like to ask them the question of, "Why do you need it?" How it might affect our opportunities to...
Mr. Chairman, can I make a couple of comments, please? Number one, the square footage of the structures where it applies to the school facilities tax on a commercial building maxes out at 150,000 square feet, regardless of how big the building is. So we can only collect for the first 150,000 square feet per building where it applies to commercial. And also, Chapter 5 of the Building Code addresses building limitations on building height and area based on the use and the type of construction on the structure. And that's, that's based upon life safety reasons and structural reasons. I would think that as we're going through this and reviewing this, that any limitations within the Building Code would trump the zoning ordinance and the height limit, the height allowances in the zoning ordinance.
Makes sense, Tanya. Thank you. I'd forgot about that square footage. Probably kills that thought process, but still, you know, your point about what's in place right now, I'd still like to ask why, you know? Why do you want a taller building? What do you need it for? And what's going on inside there?
Tanya?
Mm-hmm.
Just to be clear, that 150,000 square foot max for the school facilities tax, for, for clarity for everybody in this room, is, is that floor space or is that enclosed space?
That's conditioned usable area.
Like air-conditioned, okay.
Yes.
So height, height could be irrelevant. Floor space could be irrelevant. It's a cu, think of it as a cube of 150,000, if it's air-conditioned.
It's enclosed area. So we would combine a first and a second floor, we would count all the square footage in the building and assess the school facilities tax to the first 150,000 square feet.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I've, I've been sitting here thinking about where we would have different heights building in our county, and the co-op center, the feeds, the feed center in Laverne, and maybe around the airport, some of those hangars, are there anything else? Is there any 60-foot-plus buildings in the county that you could share with me that I could reference in my head? What that would look like?
Are you talking any unincorporated, or are you talking just anywhere?
Anywhere, really. I mean, for, for a warehouse-type, 60-foot tall warehouse-type building?
I mean, off the top of my head, I can't think of any. That doesn't mean, I mean, I'm sure they're out there.
Correct, yeah.
I'm just, I'm kind of like you, I didn't come prepared with that thought in my mind. Like I said, I want to say that the, one of the industrial parks we did look at not too terribly long ago for rezoning in the unincorporated area, I want to say was a maximum of 50 feet. That was probably the closest thing that we had from, that I can, of any recent examples that I can think of, yeah.
You know, I was looking at these where you had Smyrna, Murfreesboro, Lebanon has increased theirs. I would say the reason those have been increased is the fact of some manufacturers that may have, have something within a plant that needs to go there.
An elevator-type thing.
Think about Nissan.
Right.
I'd say some of those buildings may be somewhat larger if you've ever been in there. I don't know, but I'd say they are looking at that of some of those manufacturers. Pillsbury, Pillsbury's probably got, got some...
Some of the elevators.
Some of the elevators that go in there. So I'd say that's what that's all about right there. Because of Smyrna, you know, there's a hanger or two that's fairly large because they deal with blimps. So they have to hang in there. And so, you know, that's what they're preparing for, is things that they use for those particular things.
No, I appreciate the discussion. I just, like I said, this was just, I, I discussed it with the applicant, I told them we'd bring it up and kind of see where it went, so now I can report back to them, so that's fine.
Anything else?
I don't have anything unless you do.
We have another planning commission meeting, July 14th. It says here in the courthouse, it may be in room 205. So we'll notify you at that time because they are ripping everything out of here for the sound system, so it, if they get it done, we'll be in here. If not, we'll probably be over here in 205 for that meeting. After last night, we are still looking at dates of when we will get together. We'll probably put the, the work session in with one of our regular meetings, that way we're not calling a special meeting and, and having that done. So we'll have a work session to get it all put together. And going that way, remember that what we sent you... Remember that what we sent you before that showed the full planning, it is complete now, so you can click on that, you can look at our book and see what it was, I was reading it last night after 12 o'clock, so I, I know it's all complete now.
Yeah, and I will say, just not to interrupt you, Mr. Chairman, but I got a text from Michael Skipper at GNRC while we were having our meeting, he said that today they're reviewing it for any typos that snuck through, and we'll post an updated version, he said nothing else is going to change until we compile our comments and get that to them, so that's, that's kind of where we are right now.
Well, that's, that's where we are on that, so we will be letting you know and getting that to you.
I don't know if, if this could just be officially on the record, I, I think it would be a really good idea to send out an email to all of the people that engaged with, with our committee process of getting Plan Rutherford together and just letting them know that the new updated draft version is available on the website, and then should, whenever, when we talk about this again, when this is put back on our agenda, that we send all of those people who shared their email addresses with us, share with them that we're putting this back on the agenda, even if we don't have a public, even if we don't have a public hearing, that public comment is open at the beginning of each of our meetings, and they could come and, and express their thoughts in case they weren't here last night.
Yes, yeah, and actually, I spoke with, well, Jessica Hill yesterday, and she had mentioned something about sending out an email to all those, just basically what you just said, so, yes.
That's being discussed, and our county attorney is looking at the fact of whether or not to have a public hearing, whenever we do come up for a vote and go in that direction, so that's still under discussion there. So we'll keep you posted on that, let you know where we are, and, and if there is no other business right over here...
One more question, Doug and Mr. Chairman, I've got, got some questions that were forwarded to me by County Commissioner Hope Oliver, I asked her to do that. If I could forward those on to you, and we could answer those questions to her personally and then follow up at our next meeting?
Yes.
She'll have those answers beforehand, and then we'll follow up with the general public, would that be appropriate?
Yes, sir, we could be happy to do that.
Okay, anything else, right back here?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a suggestion to staff, the, the whole traffic calming subject is interesting, and I'm going to suggest that at a future educational slot that we have to do, or just have a guest speaker in, that we cover that topic. I know that the city, I forget, I think it's, I forget her name, but there's a lady that, that is involved heavily in the traffic calming thing for Murfreesboro.
Michelle Emerson, the city engineer.
Okay.
Yeah.
That might be a good source. I understand the paving issue that Greg Brooks might have, but that, to me, is the simplest and most economic way to do that in existing subdivisions and future, so there's got to be a way around the paving issue, we just don't know what it is yet. Maybe you can unscrew them and pick them up and set them aside, pave and put them back in, we, there's got to be a way to skin that cat, we just need to know what it is, so. The ones I've seen around town work really well, they're, they're narrow, so automobile traffic is slowed, but they're spaced so, emergency vehicles, like a fire truck, can, with their wheelbase span, they can span them and not have to hit the bumps, so they're laid out pretty cool, so I, I'd just like to learn more about that, and perhaps that's a invite to somebody to do it.
Yeah, so we can start looking into setting up something.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? If not, we are adjourned.